Good morning, everybody. Say good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Wangari Therau, and I work at Women's Health in Women's Hands, a community health center that works with immigrant, refugee, and non-status racialized women. So I'm going to be chairing this session, so I really don't have much to say, which is good because I tend to go on and on. So welcome to the session, the special session on HIV and immigration. And we all know that immigration plays a really big role in linking the global epidemics that have emerged in countries with generalized epidemics with the Canadian epidemic where we have low prevalence of HIV. So it's really important to understand this bridge and to actually understand what policy, programming, research implications it might have, particularly to ensure that we do take care of those living with HIV who have come through immigration. So we're going to hear from, you know, a panel of experts, and they're going to highlight the important legal policy as well as programming implications and lived experience of people living with HIV from immigrant populations. So the speakers will also provide us with, because this is a research conference, a tentative agenda on where we need to go in terms of HIV and immigration. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce our first speaker. And we've decided we're going to actually let all the presenters speak, and then we can actually ask questions because we would like to present these as a panel, not as the 10-minute car type of thing. So anyway. So our first speaker is actually Adrian Smith from one of the legal, the law firms in Toronto that actually deals a lot with HIV and immigration and supports people that are applying for legal status. So welcome.
Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, sure. Come here. Okay. So I'm the first one up, so this is a trial and error situation with the slides. Okay, so I'm very excited to be here on an early Sunday morning. I hope everyone had fun at the gala social event last night. So I'm going to try to make this as interesting as possible for an early Sunday morning session. So I'm a practicing lawyer with the law firm Jordan Batista, and we do a lot of cases on medical inadmissibility, and the bulk of that is done with people of HIV. So I've been asked to outline the immigration laws in Canada that can result in someone being either denied entry or the ability to actually stay in Canada because of their HIV status. So since 2002, let me, okay. I got straight forward. So since 2002, the government has required foreign nationals to take a medical examination, and this includes automatic testing for HIV. So the legal authority for this is actually found in Section 38 of the Immigration and Refugee Protection Act, which I've put up on the slide here. And what it says is that a foreign national is inadmissible if they might reasonably be expected to cause excessive demand on health or social services. So health services can include monitoring by a specialist or antiretrovirals, and then social services can include placement in a long-term care facility. So what does this term excessive demand actually mean? So when we're looking at whether a person is inadmissible to Canada, then the government assesses the healthcare costs that would exceed the national average. And usually, they look at a five-year period, but with people of HIV, they actually look at a 10-year period. And this is because HIV is an incurable disease, so there's a presumption that costs will be incurred actually over 10 years. So what is the actual cost that's associated with this? So basically, each year, the government sets out what the excessive demand cost is. And for 2015, it's been set at $6,327 a year. And this amount doesn't actually include any occasional monitoring that needs to be done by a doctor. Those services are not considered to be part of an excessive cost. So when does the government actually find out when a person has HIV in the immigration process? So there's basically three different situations. The first is when you make a temporary application. So if you're doing a temporary visa or an extension of your status when you're here, then the form asks the first question. So it asks, "Do you have a physical or mental disorder that would require social and health services other than medication during a stay in Canada?" So for our clients who have HIV, we answer no to this question because usually, it's just the ARVs that are needed. And then the second part is on immigration forms for permanent status, but this is a different question you'll see on the slide. It asks, "Have you or the person who's on the application ever had a serious disease or mental disorder?" So the answer for our clients with HIV is yes to this question. So you can see the difference of when HIV actually gets disclosed in the process. And then the last situation, and this is the most common scenario when HIV actually gets disclosed to the government, is when there's a medical examination that's done by the immigration department's physician. So this is the most common stage in which concerns about medical inadmissibility come up. So then what happens after an application is actually flagged? So the government has a processing manual that they follow that basically assesses when HIV status is disclosed. So what the medical officer from the immigration department does is they look at the CD4 count, they look at the viral loads, and they determine whether ARVs are needed in that particular applicant's situation. So the current excessive demand threshold basically says that if there's a CD4 below 350 or a viral load that's above 55,000, then either, if either of the lab results come back with this, then CIC will flag the file for potential medical inadmissibility and excessive demand on health services. So what I've done is I've put up three common scenarios that I find comes up a lot in my practice. So basically, after the application is flagged, after the medical officer has looked at whether there could be concerns about medical inadmissibility, then what they do is they send what's called a fairness letter. They send a letter to the applicant raising the concerns about inadmissibility. And there's three things that I find come up very, very often. And the first is that often the findings exaggerate what medical treatment is actually needed. So often, I'll get a letter, and you're reading the health condition of the person, and you're thinking it's the worst-case scenario that you've ever seen. It's alleging hospitalization is required. It's alleging long-term care is needed. It's saying that their status is unmanageable. So often, the actual condition of the person can be very exaggerated in the letter. So then what we do is we get access to the person's medical file from the government, and we send the medical results to a different physician or to a specialist in Canada. And we find that often the health outcomes that are in the government letter are very different than what the physician or the specialist in Canada says. The other thing that happens, scenario two, is that often I'll get a letter that doesn't actually list the services that are required. And under Canadian case law, the government officials actually have to list exactly what is the basis for the excessive demand. So you can't just describe the person's health status and then automatically make a finding about medical inadmissibility. You actually have to list what it is that would raise concerns about inadmissibility. So then what do we do as immigration lawyers? How do we respond to these concerns that are raised in what we call this fairness letter? So first, we always assess whether the immigration department's medical opinion is reasonable. So we ask a Canadian specialist to review the person's health profile and give an assessment about whether the concerns that have been raised are actually valid. The second thing we do is we look at the cost of the ARVs and the availability of the medications in Canada. So often, the costs of the drugs that are set out in the letter are pretty outdated. Like, I've seen officers rely on the price of drugs from 10 years ago, or they're using a brand-name drug when a generic and cheaper version is available. So what we do is basically assess whether that is the most current information. And the other thing we want to do is we want to look at whether the applicant actually has access to private insurance because the purpose is actually to show the government that there are other means of accessing healthcare that doesn't include, I guess, taking from the public purse. The third thing that we can do is we can actually ask for an exemption from the excessive demand, and that's based on humanitarian factors. So if our applicant has, you know, only family members that are remaining in Canada, they have no one in their home country, or they face discrimination when they're accessing healthcare in their home country, then you can raise all of these arguments. And I find that the applicants that are the strongest, that have the strongest humanitarian factors, often the cost of their healthcare is not far above the excessive demand threshold. So that's $6,300. So how do we actually challenge this government policy that flags basically every person that's diagnosed with HIV? How do you avoid flagging them as an excessive demand on the Canadian healthcare system? So first off, we always point out to the immigration department that they're required to look at each person's particular health status and what services they require. So I put up a reference to the Supreme Court case on this issue, and the court has been very clear that they've held that just because you have a health condition doesn't mean that you actually are going to be in excessive demand on the healthcare system. And this includes HIV. So what we find often is the government is taking a health condition and then making a conclusion about inadmissibility. And that's just not the way that the Supreme Court has dictated, that they need to do their assessment. The other thing that the court has stated is that when the officer is doing their assessment about the costs that they think the person will need in Canada, it has to be based in evidence. It can't be speculative. It can't be based on nothing. It has to be based on the person's actual health profile. And often, what we'll see is a kind of boilerplate language that is applied to this population that isn't, I guess, relevant to the particular applicant in each case. The court has also said that if you have a private insurance plan, then this can help offset the excessive demand because this helps pay for the ARVs. And because Trillium only kicks in after private insurance coverage is exhausted, then we've been really successful in using a private insurance plan as a way to avoid medical inadmissibility. So I've put up some of the findings from a research, research study that was done at U of T and done by our law firm. And this looked at the amount that was set by CIC, and it showed that this $6,300 amount is actually even too low. And the study also pointed out that when the government's looking at excessive demand, they didn't take into account the potential for the tax base of the applicants who would be entering the labor market and that this often exceeds the amount of any healthcare costs that they may use in Canada. So from our perspective, I would just say that there's still a lot of work to be done to educate the government around this area. A lot of, we find, sweeping findings are made about the HIV population. And we find at least this population is very diverse in terms of the quality of their healthcare. And because there's been so many advancements and changes in treatments that happen each year, then a lot of the policies that are being relied on currently can be from a decade ago, and they're just not applicable to a lot of people. So that's it for me. So I'm happy to take any questions after. Thank you.
So thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Jessica Halverson from the Public Health Agency of Canada. Thank you.
Thank you, Wangari. Unfortunately, colleagues from Citizenship and Immigration Canada were not able to be here today. So I'll do my best to provide to you a succinct snapshot as far as what we know of epidemiological trends based on some limited data that we have at the Public Health Agency of Canada. So bear with me here. I'm going to whip through things very quickly so that I make sure we have lots of time for discussion at the end. Very briefly, I have no conflicts of interest to disclose. So we'll start by looking at results based on HIV screening conducted within Canada, and then we'll turn to the population of those that have been screened overseas. Adrian did give a little bit of background, but just to reiterate that HIV testing was introduced as a required component of the immigration medical exam in 2002. And it's a requirement, as you know, the IME is a requirement for all foreign nationals seeking permanent residency status and for some seeking temporary residency status. As far as what my agency holds, we do get some non-nominal aggregate data from CIC, and that includes some very basic information regarding demographics. The data that's extracted from CIC does come from several different databases, and so it does make it really challenging to try to analyze the differences across these groups. So what can we say about overall trends as it relates to HIV and immigration in Canada? When we look at the figures for the most recent year of data available, which is from 2012, we don't have the total number of persons who, excuse me, we don't have the total number of applicants who applied for residency that year, but what we do know in the agency is that over 1 million persons received temporary residency status, and over 250,000 persons received permanent residency status and landed in Canada. So we can make some very gross assumptions. So for example, if we said that in the year 2012, let's say, 1 million persons received either temporary status or permanent residency status and underwent an IME and came to Canada, that would give us a denominator, and we could look at the total test results for that year of 534 to come up with a prevalence rate of 0.05%. I want to really reiterate that these are very large assumptions and very crude calculations, but nonetheless, it does indicate that at least for 2012, we saw very low HIV prevalence when we're looking at all applicants overall. So what can we say about individuals who do test positive through the IME process? And again, we'll start with those in Canada. The year here reflects the date of test for the individual in Canada. And we have 10 years of data available. 3,004 persons cumulatively tested positive for HIV during those 10 years here in Canada, obviously for an average annual rate of 300. It is important to note that these numbers reflect persons who both received and were denied residency status. So some of these individuals may not have been able to stay here in Canada. As far as demographics, we see that slightly more males compared to males were tested positive for HIV here in Canada. And we also see that the most common age group was 30 to 39, followed by 20 to 29, and then 40 to 49. So again, small minority in the youth and over 50 age groups. As far as geographical distribution, we see that the greatest numbers testing positive for HIV are located here in Ontario at over 54%. The next most common province was Quebec. As far as origin of these individuals who are testing positive for HIV, oh, excuse me, I think we are missing a slide. Yes, we are. So just to point out that over 67% of persons who tested positive for HIV in Canada came from countries that were deemed as HIV endemic. The definition we've used for that term is countries that have a general prevalence of 1.0% or greater and one of the following characteristics. This is just a standard definition that's used. According to this definition, there are 71 countries in the world that would qualify as being HIV endemic. And there we go. There's the slide that indicates that 67% of persons testing positive were from those countries. So now let's look at persons who've tested positive for HIV overseas through the IME. It's important to note that the data I'll reflect here reflects those that have subsequently come to Canada, so they would have received residency status, either temporary or permanent. Compared to the other group, we see fewer numbers here. For the eight years of data that we have available, again, the time period doesn't match perfectly, but we did have 1,058 persons who were diagnosed through the IME process overseas and subsequently came to Canada for an average annual of 132. It is important to point out that there is oftentimes a big lag, a lag period between when someone is tested for HIV through the IME process and then when they are granted residency status, and then, of course, when they come to Canada. So there may be persons who would test positive for HIV if there were a closer time period between the time of testing. So again, we're not capturing everyone here, is my message. A little bit difference in terms of demographics. We see a slightly higher percentage of females. The age group breakdown is pretty similar. Again, majority in the 20 to 49 age ranges. We also see a slight difference in the geographic distribution of those who've tested positive overseas and then come to Canada. Ontario still accounts for the greatest number at over 33%, but we see a bit more of an equitable distribution in the Western and Prairie provinces compared to our previous group. And we see similar breakdowns when we're looking at country of origin in terms of prevalence rates in those countries of birth. So I'll just wrap up there. Again, our very preliminary, very rough estimates indicate very low prevalence overall among all undergoing an IME and coming to Canada. It is important to reiterate that not all applicants necessarily come to Canada and/or that some that come to Canada don't necessarily stay here. Those who test positive in Canada would, in theory, be linked into the healthcare system through the standard mechanisms. For those who test positive overseas and subsequently come to Canada, CIC does make referrals to provincial health authorities upon the individual's arrival here in Canada. And I'll just conclude there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Our next speaker is going to be Maureen Noweena from the Committee for Accessible AIDS Treatment.
Good morning. Yeah, I hope I'll be able to do this. So... I have no conflict of interests. As Wangari said, from the Committee for Accessible AIDS Treatment, which is a coalition that was formed in 1999 to really work in reducing barriers first by people living with HIV while immigrants, refugees, and undocumented. CART is a coalition of over 40 health, legal, social service organizations, including individuals, immigrants, refugees, and PHAs. I'm privileged to have worked with everyone on this panel at one time, except for... But yeah, so, kind of, yeah. CART has, that's some of our network partners and members. So I'm going to just talk about some of the issues that affect immigrants, refugees, and people living with HIV. And Alan and Derek will follow up with some of the other parts of it. So some of the key challenges that really face IRN PHAs in Canada include challenges in navigating the immigration and refugee application process. We have migration and settlement processes, access to services and social determinants of health, and recent changes to public policies affecting newcomers, especially refugees, and stigma and discrimination. So when we look at navigating the immigration system, you know Adrian was here this morning talking about the whole medical inadmissibility. How many of us will remember that in five minutes? Yeah, and then it gets worse. So the whole process is very complicated, even for service providers, even for me, who's been doing this for eight years. And it gets more challenging when someone is new in the country, is trying to navigate this whole process, has other challenges, including language, barriers, access to services, ETC. So the immigration and refugee system is very complex and difficult to navigate, time-consuming and costly. Some policies also work at cross purposes for each stage. And people are at different stages. There's people who are refugee applicants. There are people applying for humanitarian. There are people applying for permanent residence. So it gets more complex with each stage. Not talking about work permit application, drug coverage, inadmissibility, ETC. And then the processing times of the whole process. And I'll talk about this in a slide coming up. And you know, when you look at the processing times, it also, it's different based on what application you're putting in. Yeah? And the cost. Applying for permanent residence would cost you $100, $500, $500. And for someone who's new in the country, living with HIV, who's probably on welfare, which is maybe $550 a month, that's really not something they can afford to pay for. And then there is the migration and settlement processes. And when we look at migration and settlement processes, it's important to look at the whole process. What happened before the person left? What happened in their country of origin? What was the process like when they were moving here? How did they get here? You know, people come here through different ways. Some people passed through five countries to get to Canada. There are people who are coming from more torn countries, who are coming from a lot of persecutions, homophobic countries, where they had to hide in a bush for a number of times. All this affects people. There's the distance from family. Then there's the loss of family friends when you come to this country. Leaving your children behind, your spouse behind, loss of your language. You know, you come here and you cannot even get a job because your academic qualifications is not recognized. All these are challenges people go through, and that's part of the migration process. Then settlement and adaptation. You're new in Canada, old or still people. You know, coming to Canada in winter 2015 wouldn't have been fun, yeah? That's all part of the process. Learning a new language for those who are not English or French-speaking, or learning the transit system. I think there was a session we were in yesterday where people talked about getting on a train and going to the other end of, and that's just in Toronto, the line and finding your way around. Getting housing, big challenge. Groceries, you know, just getting food that you know how to eat. Living in a shelter. There's a lot of other issues that come with that. And then there's access to trade and profession. Networking, getting Canadian experience, which, you know, we need a supermarket that sells Canadian experience to immigrants. Doesn't exist. Maybe I'll get one. No recognition of your own degree and certificate. All these things are challenging. You know, when you're moving to this country, let's say you're 40 years old, you had a profession, you are a doctor, and you come here, and you have to start from scratch. You have a family to take care of, and a lot of other things. It's not easy. And then there's the legal barriers. No ID, having to go through getting treatment, whether it's even just getting, No ID, having to go through getting treatment, whether it's even just getting when you're new, trying to get your ARVs if you do not know how the system works. Accessing services. And all, it also depends on where you are in the whole immigration spectrum. And then there's barriers to social determinants of health, you know, economic status and poverty. Of course, if you're on welfare and getting $550 a month, that's just you're living in poverty. Or, you know, you're better off if you're on ODSP but not perfect. And then there's access to services and support. Depending on your legal status in Canada, there are services you could or could not access. So for example, someone who maybe applied for a refugee and was denied, or someone who's undocumented cannot access any services most of the time. And there are services they probably could access and they're not aware. Then there's the lack of culturally competent services. We've heard about this in a lot of different sessions at this conference. Difficulty prioritizing self-care before addressing basic survival needs. And when we talk about prioritizing for immigrants, you come here and for a lot of people I work with, including PHAs and non-PHAs, when you left your family back home, you're in Canada, you know, everybody's expecting you to help. You have your spouse there, wife, husband, you have your children who need to go to school, and you're supposed to live and survive in Canada, and you also are supposed to take care of the family you left behind. It's not easy. And so people don't really take care of themselves. People end up putting themselves in very difficult situations, working under a table in very scary situations, and not even eating well. And then the stigma and discrimination, HIV racism, homophobia, xenophobia, and, you know, every other kind of oppression that exists. So this really is, becomes a barrier to accessing the social determinants of health, whether it's housing, and for a lot of newcomers, when they come here, they're in a shelter, then there's rooming housing, or they're in shared housing where the person they're sharing the house with doesn't know their HIV status, and they don't want the person to know their status, and so they hide their medication or walk with their medication in their bag throughout the day. People learn to survive, but it's not the easiest of ways. I thought Adrian would cover this, but this is also one of the issues currently we see, the changes to the refugee determination process and its impact. We know within the last few years, three, four years, there's been a lot of changes to the refugee determination process. So for example, right now, the refugee process takes a shorter time, and people are supposed to prove, to provide all documents to prove, yes, you have reason to apply for refugee. And sometimes people don't have these documents. And also, all these changes affect whether it's IFH, health coverage, so a lot of changes. Even for service providers who work in frontline in air, so some of us are not up to date with these changes because they keep coming up. And so we, one of the things we have been witnessing is there's a shortened processing time for refugee claims and higher rejection rates from certain countries. And we've all heard about the designated countries of origin. So there are people from certain countries, for example, Mexico, I would use that as an example, who are deemed not to come from a designated country of origin, and most of the time we find that their cases fail. And what's happened is we find that there's a lot of, and I see a lot of PHAs from Mexico who don't even put in refugee applications because why put it in if you're going to fail? So you better just live in Canada, under the radar, not documented, and not be in the system. So some of the things that have happened so far, so at Committee for Accessible AIDS Treatment, we've been working to address some of these community needs through action research, and this has been our experience. So we've really done a lot of work, and one of the most, I could say wise practices, not necessarily, but we've realized when the community is engaged in, having a community that's engaged in research and advocacy is a good thing. And so we engage a lot of our community members, and specifically immigrants, refugees, and non-status people living with HIV, in research. We also do a lot of capacity building for service providers as well as for immigrants, refugees, and non-status people living with HIV. It's also important to translate knowledge into policies and practices. So just not doing research and putting it in a paper and filing it somewhere, really ensuring that whatever outcomes we have, we translate them into policies and practices, and also community succession and transformation. I hope I will not be standing here in 10 years doing the same thing. Someone else will be doing it. Maybe five years. So just talking about some of the research that CAT has undertaken. So in 2001, CAT undertook an Improving Treatment Access for Non-Insured Immigrants, Refugees, and Non-Status PHAs. This included a survey of IRN PHAs, families and service providers, 50 in number, in-depth interviews of IRN PHAs with health coverage barriers, so those who could not access health coverage. So we explored needs, challenges, and strategies. Engaged health service providers, legal service providers, community service providers, pharmaceutical partners, government policymakers, in a think tank to develop solutions. So this is coming up with a strategy to address the needs. So some of the solutions that came out of that was the HIV Medication Access Project at Toronto People with HIV Foundation, PWA, that provides compassionate drugs for people living with HIV who do not have access. We do, it also, one of the outcomes was an HIV and Immigration Service Access Training that's conducted out of Region Park Community Health Centre. So this is an immigration training that we conduct with Jordan Batista Law Firm, they've been working with us closely, Halkor, and a number of immigration lawyers within Toronto for service provider as well for IRN PHAs. And I think the last two years, two years ago, we were privileged enough, and I think we are happy to announce that the AIDS Bureau funded us to do this training across the province. So we've done the same training for service providers in other parts of Ontario. And then there was the legal information created in partnership with Halkor, as well as the immigration lawyer established at Halkor. So through these, these are some of the outcomes, which is good. And I mean, more could be done. And then in 2000, between 2005 and 2008, CAT conducted an Improving Mental Health Service Access for IRN PHAs. And I was privileged to be part of this research study at a time when I was really new in Canada, and I think it was an eye-opener for me, especially in terms of talking about mental health issues, being an immigrant, and you know, all the stigma related to mental health issues. So this research had three phases. Those focus groups and individual interviews of IRN PHAs, those surveys of health, legal, settlement, and social service providers, 100 in number. And then there's the analyzing of the results and engaging IRN PHAs to co-develop best practice recommendations. And I was involved in actually all the parts of this research, including, I think the most empowering part was really developing a best practice recommendation. And this was the best practice recommendation we came up with, us, PHAs who are immigrants, refugees, and non-status people living with HIV. For us, key was building the capacity of IRN PHAs, being informed, knowing our rights, knowing how to access services. This helped us to really be self-advocate and also know how to navigate the system. So building capacity of IRN PHAs was one of the recommendations. Enhancing social support for PHAs was another one. Then service provider training, you know, we were like, you know, an informed service provider is also good for me because it's really challenging. I don't know, my service provider doesn't know, where do we go to? Addressing service inadequacies and improving accountability was another one. Anti-stigma, anti-discrimination through public education, improving service delivery and coordination, and improving policies and bridging gaps. So this was the translating research to action piece, PHA skill building. We created a mentorship program for people living with HIV, which is ongoing, and it's really an empowering formalized mentorship for PHAs, paired with mentors, could be PHA mentors, non-PHA mentors, to support them through whatever life transitions they are going through. Service provider training, which is the designated medical practitioner training, Daryl will talk about that. Anti-stigma, addressing anti-stigma, which includes mobilizing ethno-racial leaders against HIV stigma. And one of the things that people talked about at the research was, as ethno-racial communities, when we are a socialized community, we live with our community members, we talk about our issues. But when it comes to HIV, it's difficult to talk about your issues either with a faith-based leader or community leader because of the stigma. So one of the recommendations were really engaging community leaders, including media, including social justice leaders, including faith-based leader in anti-stigma campaigns. And then there was the policy gaps, the medical inadmissibility study, Adrian spoke about that, and championed recommendations via mental health strategy and AIDS strategy. So that's our legacy flyer, our mentorship program. Yeah, so I think I'll let Daryl present this. So that's just a few of some of the programs that CAT has developed through research. Thank you.
So thank you very much, Maureen. The presentation for Dr. Daryl Tan and Maureen and Dr. Alan Lee is actually combined, so they will be presenting from the same slide deck.
Thanks, Wangari. So my name is Daryl Tan, I'm an infectious diseases doc here in Toronto and a clinician scientist. And as Maureen mentioned, one of the findings that emerged out of the work that CAT has been doing over the last several years is that the very experience of the government-mandated HIV testing in the context of immigration medical examination has not always necessarily been that positive an experience for that individual going through the process. And it's actually very important, though, because it is, in many ways, symbolically, if not literally, the first contact that many newcomers to Canada may be actually having with our healthcare system. So we did a project that was really led by Jennifer Tran at the time that she was a medical student, she's now a medical resident, looking at the HIV testing process from the perspective of these designated medical practitioners in the context of the immigration medical exam. I should point out that Adrian mentioned earlier in her talk that these individuals are now known as panel physicians. At the time that we did the study, they were known as designated medical practitioners, and that's why I'll be using the acronym DMP a couple times in the next few slides. So it's recognized, I think, by all of us in this room that if you're going to do an HIV test, if you're going to mandate that that test be done, that there should be some pre- and post-test counseling. That is, in fact, acknowledged and mandated by CIC. And I've included here a lengthy quotation directly from the handbook that is provided to DMPs in the course of explaining their duties to them. I'll briefly point out that it indicates that HIV infection is not in and of itself considered a significant public health risk. That's not the reason ostensibly in the handbook that HIV testing is being done. However, it does go on to say that, you know, it's possible that an individual who is diagnosed with HIV through this process could kind of behave in a way that could lead to public health risks. And therefore, that's why CIC states that, you know, it's for that reason that post-test counseling is so fundamental. They say that it provides an opportunity for the physician to counsel the person to, you know, not do that. So you can see already that in the language that's provided to these physicians, it's framed in such a way that emphasizes, you know, the importance of not spreading HIV and de-emphasizes, relatively speaking, the importance of counseling for the welfare of that individual, him or herself. We acknowledge, though, that DMPs may be very limited in time by their busy practices in training, in clinical duties, and language barriers to perform pre- and post-test counseling in a way that maybe perhaps we would ideally like them to be able to do. And it's for that reason we recognize that tension that we went ahead and did a study to look at their experience. We wanted to look at the knowledge, attitudes, practices, and needs of these DMPs with regard to this government-mandated duty that they have to do testing in newcomers to Canada. So this is a brief overview of the methodology. This was a survey that covered those five domains in those circles you see on this slide. It was 16 items, some of them had many components, a survey that was developed from input from physicians of various kinds, including DMPs themselves, community members as well. And at the time, there'd be this survey, all of the DMPs that are practicing in Canada, their contact information is freely, was freely accessible, is freely accessible on the internet, so we were able to directly mail them surveys. We did three rounds of the survey. The first one was only in English, but the second and third versions were bilingual, in English and French. And here's a brief overview of the individuals that responded to the survey. We had a pretty decent response rate for busy physicians, 41%. You can see that most of them had been in practice as a DMP for many years. The red area shows those who'd been working as a DMP for 11 to 20 years. The number of IMEs done per month was perhaps a little bit bimodal. Some panel physicians or DMPs were only doing 0 to 10 or 11 to 20, but many were actually doing more than 50 of these immigration medicals and hence HIV tests per month. And yet, the proportion of individuals that any individual DMP was actually diagnosing with HIV in the course of this process was very, very low, most of them saying only up to 0.5%, consistent with the numbers that you saw earlier that Jessica went over with us. I wanted to show you this, only two more data slides from the study, and I'll pass over to Alan after that. But we wanted to ask, some of the questions that we asked looked at the DMP's attitudes towards admissibility to Canada. And we asked these three questions, among others, on a Likert scale, looking at strongly, in which the light color represents strongly disagree, the darker colors on the right represent strongly agreeing with these statements. You can see that a relative minority of respondents said that they agreed or strongly agree that HIV-positive immigrants pose a danger to public health and safety. Slightly larger number of individuals felt that HIV-positive immigrants cause excessive demand on healthcare, on the healthcare system here in Canada, so consistent with the philosophy of CIC that has been providing them with this information. And perhaps ironically, only a very small minority of respondents therefore necessarily felt that HIV zero positivity is a reasonable grounds for denial into Canada. But nevertheless, many people did feel that these were major concerns. And then we said, okay, well, if that's what you think, what are you actually doing in practice? How often do you speak to your patients that you're testing about, in blue here, transmission risks and risk reduction, or in red, coping and social support? So the blue is issues that relate to, you know, the importance of not spreading HIV to other individuals, the red is focusing on the individual, him or herself, and you can see that the blue bars really show that people were more tending to emphasize those issues over the counseling to the person, him or herself, about coping and social support. People spent only a very small amount of time, because of their time constraints, on pre- and post-test counseling. So perhaps that's a constraint that limits how much they can talk about these issues adequately. I'm not showing you all the data. It is published now in AIDS Care last year. But in conclusion, from this small piece of work, we identified, we think, some opportunities for improvement regarding DMP's knowledge, attitudes, and practices about mandatory HIV testing through this government-mandated duty that they have. In particular, we thought that they could benefit from more information, not only about the psychosocial issues that we've briefly related to here, but also some of the pure biomedical topics as well, understanding the HIV test and its limitations, for example. We do think that a more balanced approach would be valuable to counseling. That includes more emphasis relatively on patient support in addition to just talking about HIV transmission. Perhaps, again, this is coming from the way in which this is really framed for the physicians by the DMP handbook. Importantly, though, we did note that the respondents were receptive to receiving support, so we asked them in what formats they would like to receive this support, and you can see that here. We've actually done one session, as Maureen mentioned, for Toronto area DMPs, haven't done further work at this point, but definitely there, I think, are some opportunities to improve on this locus. And as I said, they're an important group because they really do represent, in some ways, the first contact with the Canadian healthcare system for many of these newcomers to Canada.
So thanks, Daryl. So our next speaker and last is Dr. Alan Lee, and I hope you're keeping track of your questions. Once Alan is done, we will get to the discussion. Thank you.
Well, that is only if the alarm doesn't ring after eight minutes and 30 seconds that I have left. So, good morning. I appreciate the opportunity of sharing some of the work of CAT with you. I'm a primary care physician working at downtown Toronto at Region Park Community Health Centre, and I've been with Committee for Accessible AIDS Treatment since the very beginning. So I wanted to talk about two things. One is, Maureen talked about the different areas of work, and Daryl talked about some of that as well, like in terms of how we do community responsive research and generate action and programs and policies changes from those, right? So we talk about, you know, when we talk about service provider training, when we talk about access to medication, those all lead, led to specific programs and changes. So one of the area that people have identified to be a huge barrier is stigma and discrimination within immigrant refugee communities. And so we've gotten a CRHR-funded research to look at two different interventions to address HIV stigma within ethno-racial communities. It's called CHAM, Community Champions HIV AIDS Advocate Mobilization Project. It's a very complex project, it's a three-year operational project that compare and evaluate the impact of two different interventions on reducing HIV stigma and mobilizing communities to take actions to champion against HIV stigma. So basically, we, the two interventions, one is called Acceptance Commitment Training, and one is called Social Justice Capacity Building. So ACT focuses on addressing interpersonal and interpersonal psychosocial flexibility, and how do you build on your core values and be able to advance some of the issues that you feel passionate about. Social justice capacity building focuses on understanding the interpersonal, social, and community, how the systems and policies work to impact individual lives, how social determinants interact and then have intersectional impact on people's lives, and how we can advocate against some of those injustices. So we had two arms, well, actually, four different arms of the study. So some arms has both ACT and SJCB, and some arms have only SJCB. So, and then we have PHA group and non-PHA group. And the non-PHA And the non-PHA group came from different sectors, the faith leaders, as we talked about, ethno-racial media sectors and people from ethno-racial communities who come from social justice sectors. So those people are traditionally important allies in assisting and working with immigrants and refugees to settle and to integrate into Canadian society, but they have not been very active in the battles against AIDS. So that's why we target them to participate in this study, to look at whether, you know, we can help address some of the issues that they face in order to be, to tap into their engagement and energies. So we've engaged 66 participants, and 62 of them remain active after finishing the intervention. And we follow people for nine months after, and we collect all sorts of data, it's too complex to get into that right now. It's a mixed method study. We have in-depth surveys, we have focus group before and after the intervention, we have networking sessions that bring people together to share lessons learned and issues they encounter as they translate what they learned into practices in their communities. And we have, we track people's activities for nine months. Every month, we have peer research associates, talking to people, find out what they've actually done in terms of relating to advancing social justice and HIV stigma reduction. So, so basically, what we found in a very high-level summary is that both interventions actually have salivican impact in reducing the levels of HIV stigma. So they're effective in doing that, and they're also effective in increasing community engagement and empowerment readiness in terms of how people are ready and willing and able to speak out against HIV-related discrimination, against other social injustices, and getting engaged, volunteering, participating, organizing different activities around HIV prevention and anti-stigma activities. So the activity logs that we have tracked people actually shows that from the 66 people over that nine-month period, people have engaged in over 1,000 activities in different areas. So we kind of grouped and coded the data in different major categories that includes, I actually can't see this thing from here. So in the five key areas, one is about championing against HIV stigma and discrimination, one is about advocacy on related social justice issues, promotion and support of PHAs, including both PHAs themselves as well as non-PHA community leaders, HIV prevention and education initiatives, and community networking and coalition building. So I think some of the most moving narratives that we've heard is actually how a lot of IRN PHAs who were not previously active, we didn't recruit the most active leaders that are already very engaged in the communities. We actually chose to recruit people who are newer, who just started out in the communities, who are not already champions, right? Because we wanted to support and build champions. And some of the stories is about how people have not only disclosed to their families, their communities, but began to take really active role in leadership in advocating in their church, advocating in their schools, challenging their professors and challenging their church leaders about the myths and prejudice they continue to perpetuate against So these are just data slides. But I wanted to end, because I only have another minute, to, I guess, maybe wrap up a little bit about the overall, I guess, experience of CAT in the last 15 years that we've been. And I think perhaps the lessons for all of us as allies, community partners and researchers for this conference, I think is the importance of really utilizing research as a responsible, accountable ways to engage and respond to community needs, and how we can hold ourselves accountable to generate practical, helpful, useful strategies that really address real-life concerns, rather than just for the interest of advancing careers or just even for the sake of generating knowledge, because the knowledge needs to be used in a way that is helpful and useful. And I think CAT has been able to stick to that principle, as witnessed by a lot of these actions that we've taken. But I think the most refreshing thing was the fact that, you know, when we started 15 years ago, it was really like a life rescue mission. We're trying to just get people treatment drugs for people who have no access. Now we have PHAs in all leadership positions within the organization who's advancing, as Maureen said, like, once people have the capacity-building initiatives, people are now not only responsible for getting improvement to their own health and to the community's health, but really built a lot of innovations and demonstrated a lot of resilience lessons that can be transferred and beneficial to the broader sector and contribute to the larger society. So I think a lot of times when we look at IRN PHAs, oh, it made up as more sector of really marginalized and populations within the HIV sector. But I think if we remember, people who've gone through a lot of struggles, who have to navigate through very complex challenges, actually have the most innovation and the most resilience. So if we can really learn and respect that life lessons that people have generated through that experience, I think we can get a lot of real good knowledge that can benefit all of us. So at a recent policy think tank, a group of individuals and concern stakeholders across the country, actually through the CIHR Centre of Reach, have identified a number of policy research agendas. So those are just policy-related research, and it's not exclusive, it's really the beginning of a dialogue. And I think they're identified the need, there is still a lot of gaps and a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of looking at, you know, the testing practice and impact in terms of the exclusion criteria and how is practiced, in terms of access barriers and the impact and the changes in policies, not only on immigration policy, but policies such as criminalization, and how it differentially impact PHAs who are not citizens in Canada, and how it also affects, you know, real-life access to services, disclosure, participation in the workforce and all of that. So I think, in closing, there is a lot of work to be done, but there's also a lot of work has been done. And I think that if we work in partnerships to really advance the common goal of improving health of all Canadians and all members of the global community, then I think we would be in a good position to advance health for all. So thank you very much. Oh, so we've got two extra minutes for questions.
So we just have maybe one, two questions, very brief, but we have the panelists who are here, and you can engage with them after this session. So one question. Hi. So who has the mic?
I have it, but I think there's somebody else who wanted to ask a question, so, okay, I'll go ahead then, thanks. My name is Stephanie, I'm from the Canadian HIV Legal Network, and I have a question for Adrianne. I was really interested when you talked about the criteria that you use to review a decision, and you mentioned, you know, has the medicine that's been used by the officer, like medicine from 10 years ago, or are there generics available and they haven't been taken into account? Because I was under the impression that really the only way that someone who's taking ARVs could be accepted as a permanent resident is if they have private insurance. So I would be curious to know, have you ever been able to renverser la decision, to reverse a decision when it was like the person didn't have access to insurance, but it was actually, could be shown that the costs of their RVs were lower than what was found initially? But wouldn't that still be way over the $6,000 threshold? Thanks.
So we're actually finding with a lot of the combination, like the new kind of generic brand drugs, that they are actually below the excessive demand threshold. And also, the officer often looks at medications that the person's on in their country of origin, which are not even being used in Canada. So often the costs that they're looking at are just not accurate, and the point is to look at what drugs they're going to be on when they get here and what the cost is for those. And often we're finding it is actually below the excessive demand threshold. And the thing, I think, with treatment in this area is that it's constantly changing. One week, the cost can be one thing, the next week it's something different. So I think the point is that there's this reliance on medications as a whole, and this population is so diverse that they're not looking at the specific medications that they're on.
I'm sorry, we don't have time for any more questions.
I would like to make one question, because I think it's very salient. Forty percent of people being tested at the rapid testing site in Montreal have arrived from outside of Canada. And they very likely could have arrived to the country HIV-negative, and they may have been infected in Montreal per se. And I think we have an accountability also, that people who come here have to be counseled so they don't get infected and stop blaming them. And if they're infected here, they have every right to be treated as Canadian citizens with proper healthcare. And all of this social barriers we're creating is making these people vulnerable to be infected in this country.
Yeah, thank you very much for that comment. We actually recognize that there are people who are getting infected once they get here, and we really don't understand that, that context, and we need to understand it better. But we also need to advocate for those people to actually access, be able to access healthcare. So I would like to thank the panelists. I wish we had more time for questions. Maybe next time we ask, we need two hours for this session, and to make sure that it's actually part of ongoing conferences. I think it's really important to see the people that came this morning. It's really, there's a lot of interest, and it's, we need to continue the dialogue somehow. Thank you very much.